Item 10. City Council to consider modification of Cupertino Municipal Code Section 2.18.030 to limit the use of city attorney time by individual council members. Do we have a staff report?
We do. Good evening, Mayor Scharf and City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. This item is for council to consider modification of Cupertino Municipal Code Section 2.18.030 to limit the use of city attorney time by individual city council members. And if council decides to proceed to conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 20-2212, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending City Code Section 2.18.030, Council Attorney Relations, and of Chapter 2.18 to Title 2 to Limit Use of City Attorney Time by Individual Council Members. As background, at the March 3, 2020 City Council meeting, it was requested under Future Agenda Items that modification of the Cupertino Municipal Code be prepared in order to limit the use of city attorney time by individual city council members. The intent of the modification is to ensure fair, equitable, and efficient use of the city attorney's time for the council members. The proposed language would limit the legal advice from the city attorney to two hours per city council member within any given week. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You said two hours per week.
Two hours per individual council member per week.
Okay.
So it's fairly similar to the Muni Code provision we have that limits council member requests for specific information from staff to two hours. It's kind of a different issue, though. This is strictly use of city attorney's time in answering questions for individual council members.
Okay.
And who asked for this item?
This was asked or requested by the mayor and one other council member, and I don't recall who the second council member was.
It was the mayor and vice mayor.
Yeah, it was Darcy.
And where did we ask this? In a council meeting, or did we ask this outside of?
Immediately following a closed session on city attorney evaluation in March.
So we, I just, I'm sorry, I don't remember the provision of asking for two hours of a limitation.
No, no, that's just staff recommendation. The request for the item was from you and the mayor.
Okay.
The request was to look at some sort of limitation of use of city attorney time, and we looked into it and determined that we would propose two hours per council member within any given week as a suggested timeframe.
And how did you come up with two hours?
As I mentioned, it's similar to another provision in the Muni Code where if a council member requests for staff to look into something takes more than two hours, then we need to bring it to council. So it's sort of kind of the same limitation.
So can you back, oh, sorry.
So if, if there are five council members, that's 10 hours per week over the course of a year, you know, let's say roughly 500, it's going to be less because of course we don't work every week. If I don't use any time, I don't use much time. I doubt I use 10 minutes of attorney time a week, frankly, but.
You have an unfair advantage there, Vice Mayor, as an attorney.
Yeah, I guess there's that, but I mean, can other council members use time that hasn't been used by other, I mean, under your proposal here? I know we can modify it.
We didn't specify that. That can be added if you, if the council's interested in that, sure.
Okay, yeah, I mean, 500, 500 hours a year is not, I mean, you know, when I worked in Manhattan, 2,000 hours of billables is, you know, reasonable, reasonably busy year, you know. So I mean, like, a city attorney and 25% of bandwidth for one FTE of a good, hardworking person, I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable. But, okay, so, but as envisioned, you're thinking two hours, it's not like it banks, like, if someone doesn't talk to the city attorney for 10 weeks, it's not like they have 20 hours in the following week or something.
That was my question. Do you bank it?
We weren't envisioning that it would be banked in any way.
Okay.
Oh, so.
Of course, that could be added if the council is interested in that.
Well, I mean, I think a certain amount of banking would be reasonable because, you know, there's some major issues that come forward where we may need more than two hours a week, and other weeks, you know, for many weeks, it would probably be zero for most of us. So I think some banking provision would not be unreasonable to be included in that. But, you know, before we discuss it anymore, let me go to members of the public who would like to speak on this item. So far, we have three. The first one is Jean Bedorit. Welcome.
Thank you. Could you bring up my thing? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. Well, this will be a much shorter discussion, I'm sure, than the previous item. I am here to speak in support of limiting the use of the city attorney's time by individual council members. This council needs more accountability in individual use of city resources, and this is a good first step. Let me point out that the city attorney's client is the city as a whole, not individual council members. The over $2 million in legal services in this year's budget is of concern to me, as well as other residents I've talked to. While two hours a week may not seem like much time, it adds up quickly. If each council member uses a full allowance each week, and we're not talking about necessarily just this council, this could be more than a full week of billable time every month. Do the math. This is potentially as much as $13,750 a month, or $165,000 a year. That's a lot of money with no benefits to residents. In addition, this is just for individual council members. It doesn't address the council meetings which go into the wee hours of the morning. I not only support the agenda item, but I also recommend monitoring the use of city attorney time to prevent abuse of this valuable city resource. Thank you.
Okay, well, I would, well, never mind. Okay, go ahead. Jim Moore.
Mayor Scharf?
Oh, okay, Kitty Moore, go ahead.
Okay, hi. So ordinarily, and I'm representing myself only, but when the municipal code is being considered for changes, it would need, I would think, to be for a clear reason. And when I'm looking through the City Council staff report, I'm not seeing a clear reason for why you would be making this change to the municipal code. So I would want to be seeing, you know, several abuses, excessive use, some accountability regarding, you know, you don't have to name the council members, but how many hours have been used each week? What's, what is the problem that you're trying to solve? And I'm not, I'm just not seeing it. And, you know, while we currently do have an attorney who is a city council member, there are times when you might need, you know, something specialized, like a land use attorney. And as we saw with the Westport project, you needed to have an extra specialist brought in, in order to work on that and get everyone up to speed. So I'm, I'm really concerned that the problem definition isn't in the staff report, and that you're looking to change the municipal code without a clear cause and/or direction. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, maybe the staff can explain this for, for this, and were there council members that were using an excessive amount of the city attorney's time?
I can address the current Muni Code, Chapter 2.18, the chapter that talks about city attorney, or the part that talks about city attorney time was written for the previous structure, in other words, where the city attorney was on a contract attorney. So my understanding is it was for the reasons of cost control. And that's, that's the part I can address.
Okay, um, all right. Let's go to Jim Moore. Jim, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, in my, like, 40-year business career, I spent actually hundreds of hours with corporate attorneys. That was certainly required because of presentations that I made, some of which dealt with the competition, and so they had to be accurate and supportable. In a personal type involvement with attorneys, it's probably been less than, has probably been a couple hundred hours, but it came at various times. And so for my looking at this, it definitely should be bankable because it comes at a random time as far as for the council members needing advice from the attorney. And to set a cap for two hours per week, that seems to be something that, that to me at least, doesn't make sense based on my own usage in two careers as far as using corporate attorneys. Some weeks it was zero, some weeks it turned out to be maybe 10 or 20 hours. It just depended upon the presentation and what exposure that presentation provided to the competition. So, bankable, yes, but a two-hour or two, yeah, two-hour limit per week, that certainly wouldn't have satisfied me in my two careers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Good evening. So I actually, I question whether the proposed time limitation actually addresses the intent that's listed in the staff report. And I disagree with the notion that limiting, limited access is a good thing for the city. I believe the opposite. I appreciate it when our elected and appointed officials do their homework and search for clarity and questions, or ways to think differently about issues of all kinds. Over decades of participating in our government's, city's government, and discussing things like that, that are important to our city, I've seen many rubber stampers that have power in making decisions, and representatives who arrive to city council chambers without having read their packets. It, it's really painful to know that. And I've seen others who take their jobs very seriously, and I much prefer the latter. As residents, our only way to ask questions of our city attorney is through our city council members, and we cannot ask directly ourselves. So if city council members are representing constituents correctly and transparently, then time should not be limited. Doing so actually makes it look very much like censorship. Something to consider also is questions asked upfront allow for shortened city council meetings. That's what everyone seems to want. Fewer questions need to be asked during meetings and potentially removes the need to continue an item to allow time for researching and answering questions that are asked during the meeting. Shorter meetings and non-continued items equal a reduction in attorney costs as well as staff costs. So, you know, I even wonder myself what total amount of time was spent by the city attorney's office deciding whether this is even legal to do and to propose the change. So I really hope that this doesn't happen, really, really hope it doesn't happen for various reasons, many of which I listed. Thank you.
All right, uh, next is Peggy, Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We do. Go.
Okay. Dear Mayor Scharf, Vice Mayor Paul, and council members and staff, I urge you to reject this proposal and subsequent change to our laws. If there's a problem, solve it without a law. Limiting access to our city attorney by our elected representatives is BS and censorship. There are times and issues that require more access and times when two hours are way too much. Arbitrarily putting a time limit on getting answers to legal questions regarding issues in our city or that come up before our council is very short-sighted. Example, Westport had a lot of issues, and as a resident, I'd want every single question answered, not time limit two hours, sorry. Please do not put a cap on access to legal unbiased answers from our city attorney. Don't force council members to have to seek and pay for outside and potentially biased opinions. That's why we have a city attorney. Consider always making available to other council members the questions and answers asked so that you share. You're probably asking the same questions. Consider during, doing, during a big project or big issues, having a question-answer closed session with the council and the city attorney. Consider showing, sharing the council, the city attorney's calendar to all the city members, council members. You've got to find other ways to reduce or consolidate, but don't put a cap. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Tessa. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi there. Good evening again. Um, so I also wanted to comment on this, not passing this proposal, but I do understand that there is a practical financial aspect of this. And like Peggy suggested, other options, I wanted to suggest possibly in a fiscal, at the end of the year, when everything is decided and an amount is given to an attorney for uses, perhaps city manager can alert the city council how many hours are left, how many are available. Other options could be explored. I'm afraid that this might encourage or discourage council members from seeking legal counsel when they really feel they need it, and possibly making an error, and not, not what we want to see. So just want to discourage, please explore other options before you limit it just, but definitely give it a budget or a limit that's needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all the public comment on this, so we can bring it back to City Council. Let's see. Okay, why am I still seeing that here? Okay, so, yeah, I was, I was one of the people that brought this up, and, yeah, the issue has been, basically, our billable hours for city attorney have been occasionally in, too high, and the time of the city attorney's firm has been monopolized by some council members, often for questions that staff members could answer. And I know there's some distrust of staff, and that's why there's been an effort to keep going back to the city attorney to get answers. But, you know, we, we need to be good stewards of our city's finances, especially these times, and I did not think, I didn't come up with the two hours. I think that making it bankable is absolutely required. And I don't think that, you know, eight to 10 hours a month is an unreasonable limit. But I'm certainly open-minded about this and understand where the members of the public are coming from, especially Peggy, so I'm willing to listen to other people's opinion on this. Who would like to go?
I'd like to go. I, I don't support passing a law on this. I think we should table this item and try to find a way to rein in those costs. I honestly, I don't, I don't specifically ask, remember asking that we have legislation passed for this. I, I hope that we can review the bills and come up with a system of keeping track of, you know, roughly the amount of time each council member is using in attorney time and visit it. I don't see why we can't have a subcommittee visit it on a quarterly or even bimonthly basis. I don't think it's necessarily necessary to do it on a monthly basis. But, yeah, no, I also don't see any reason to pass a law on this at this point. So I would, I wouldn't even bring a motion on this. I would just, I would just table it for another time and go back to staff with direction to, you know, find a different way of helping us monitor the consumption of, of this resource. I completely disagree that having council members that utilize the city attorney as a resource is a bad idea. I think that's, I don't, I don't want to be excessive in my language, but, I mean, you know, we're elected to, to, to the executive, essentially the judiciary and legislative, the way that our, 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 our government is structured locally. So I just, I don't see what the point is on saying, well, you're, you're, you're talking to the city attorney, one of two people you, you hire. How dare you? I mean, I think that's, I think that takes a step too far in the lobby, frankly. If we want to pass a law on anything, I think it should be on, on paid lobbying, if you want my opinion. But in terms.
Well, we could do that, too.
In terms of this, I think, I think we can find a more, a more effective way of doing it that basically says, look, let's, let's be reasonable and get a sense of what the time is. You know, in terms of the billing, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there, but if you really track our, our spending on legal expenses, it reached a nadir in 2018 because there was a lot of activity in our city attorney's department, and I don't think anyone agree, would agree that that was a good thing. We, in fact, saved the city quite a bit of money going to this contract basis. It was more expensive than we had anticipated, true, but it still saved the city money. So, I mean, I think we need to go forward and keep being responsible with respect to how we operate with attorney time, but to tell a duly-elected representative in a democratic government that's, that's under the law, okay, that they can't consult with their, their attorney, their, their, their one of two hires, and the other hire isn't trained in, in legal knowledge, I think that's just misguided at best. So.
So do you favor unlimited amount of time per council member to?
I would favor unlimited amount, no, not at all. I would.
Because that's the issue, really, that we're looking at.
I'm out. I would use this as a guideline. I would use this as a guideline and basically say, look, roughly 10 hours a week between the five of us, and, you know, try to keep that, you know, boundaries, and then see how we can operate without going to a statutory thing. You know, what really bothers me about this, it reminds me of passing a law that says that council members are not allowed to talk directly to staff members. I mean, we actually had to pass a law that says that explicitly that we are, and yet, over time, it got pushed back, and when we had a code of ethics of all things, okay, when we, when we asked our staff to go back and give us some recommendations of how we can have better communications with A, the public, and B, our commissions, they came back with a code of ethics that said that we're not supposed to talk directly to staff members. That was in direct derogation of the law that we passed about 15 years ago on this, and no one, no one really seemed to know that. But the fact of the matter is, it is legally acceptable for us to communicate with our, with staff to get information. Now, I would rather go towards a kind of understanding with community and a relationship with our staff and our community members such that we don't, we don't have to, like, microanalyze this. I mean, look, the general idea is that there is a limited amount of bandwidth. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in the city. If someone is basically saying, look, there's reasonably 10 hours a week of council time, and someone's taking like nine of those hours and even like longer, then yeah, maybe there's an allocation issue, but the rest, if the rest of us only need like half an hour here and there, I mean, I don't really see what that, that particular issue is. If it's becoming a matter of excessive bandwidth such that the city attorney's office cannot do its job, that also is a different story. But of course, the staff report is so lean that we get no numbers. So I would say, let's, let's go forward and, you know, form a subcommittee, have a meet on, you know, a quarterly basis at this point, and get a sense of, you know, what the usage is, you know, like, define this as a problem. Give us some numbers. Let us see what the economics of this is. Because from what I understand, the economics of our city attorney's budgeting is actually quite good over the course of the last several years. And again, 2018 was for reasons that, you know, aren't the most savory, frankly, but the budget itself has been, has been, has been quite fiscally in keeping with what a city of our size should be, should be spending. So I would, my recommendation is that we table this. We form a subcommittee, and we start going forward, and we start talking about what we can be doing to, you know, rein in city attorney spending if necessary, as well as the amount of time that, that our council members are using, using with the city attorney. If that turns out to be excessive, fine, let's deal with that. But if it doesn't, then, you know, then clearly there's not a problem here.
So does the staff have a report?
I, I asked for a report.
Useage by, by council member?
I asked for a report, and I have the list. Looks like they didn't share with everyone, so I can tell a little bit, so.
Well, I've had my hand up. I'd like to speak.
Actually.
I had my hand out.
Actually, Leon was ahead of you according to you, so.
So. And I can also summarize.
Okay.
Let me first, let me first say that I think it's important to make sure that we don't overuse on attorney time to keep, make sure that we keep a tab on things. But then I disagree that there has to be equitable amount between council members because some council members spend more time on certain issues, some council members spend less time on certain things, and then it depends. And so it, I thought I was the one that's using a lot of time, but that was a few months ago because of Westport, because there were a lot of issues with the project, because I was not satisfied with the staff report on these projects. As a result, I has a lot of questions. And then, so I asked for a list from Heather. She gave me the list that she can summarize. Then I find out, wow, I did not ask one single question since April. I've been so busy. I'm sorry, I should have asked more questions. But then I think this, this goes up and down. I thought I was the one that's asking a lot. Turns out I'm not, and, yeah, Heather can summarize. So I really think, in order to make any law or policy, we really need to understand, is there really a problem? Is there a problem that we cannot solve by better coordination, better understanding of collaboration between us? Yeah.
Okay.
So Heather, you want to summarize or?
Right, Heather, can you?
Yeah, and I just emphasize again that this came out of a, you know, council direction to look at limiting city attorney time, so I don't have a position on this one way or the other. And I think there was a lot of discussion at the last performance evaluation about city attorney bills, and so this was seen as one potential way to reduce that, and, and so it was brought forward as directed. Looking back at our time spent responding to individual council members, it is, is true, normally, there is, there's only a couple emails a month from individual council members. There are some exceptions where we receive more emails from some council members. The majority of emails are, take less than two hours to respond to. They're, they're usually pretty quick responses. Some emails do take longer to respond to. I would say often those are where council members are asking us to delve into issues that have been raised by members of the public. The exception to this sort of pattern of just a few emails from individual council members is when we have very controversial decisions coming before the council, and, and that can be quite, you know, we can receive dozens. and that can be quite um, you, you know, we can receive dozens of emails um a week uh with repeated um questions and, and multiple questions um from individual council members that, that can take um you know, tens of thousands of dollars to respond to. So we're happy to do whatever work council would like us to do. I, I'm not sure we've hit a capacity issue. There might have been a couple times in the year where my office was pre- spread pretty thin. Um, but that just meant we would delay implementing other projects. And I think we have managed to juggle that. It's, it's just a matter of how much um time the council wishes uh my office to spend when there's uh kind of deep dives going into particular projects on issues that may not be directly related to um the immediate answer or questions before council or, or, or issues that are being raised earlier than the in the process than when the information isn't available through staff reports.
All right. Thank you, Rod. Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, um, from, from my perspective, I, I appreciate the mayor and vice mayor asking this to be agendized. Um, to, I, you know, I don't think anybody has to look at this as you know, we're trying to take away anybody's privilege. This isn't about how much attorney time we spend. This is about the process by which we publicly and transparently go about setting priorities, right? So um the, the existing law that covers our city employees says, as I understand, staff as presented tonight, right, that when I as an individual council member want to do something, it's okay for staff to spend a little bit of time responding to that. Um, but, but past a, a certain amount, um, it becomes then enough of a, a burden, right, or a work for uh valuable staff members, right? So whether they're contractor employees really isn't the point. It becomes work uh that by its nature, right, precludes the priorities that council has set for the year. We have a work program. We review our priorities. We do it on an annual cycle. And then we all get to weigh in. We hear members of the public weigh in. We respond to that by saying, okay, here are the council priorities. We then go through a budgeting process, right? So that really, as policymakers, that's our primary mechanism for getting um an open, transparent discussion on all those things that we value. And, you know, we, we, we come to the table with different things, but the whole point of the five of us working through this process is to set a list of priorities for the city as defined through the work program, right? When, when any of us say to the city manager, look, we want you to instead of doing that thing over there that we all agreed we were gonna do, you want to go work on something else? You know, I think it's fair to a, at some point say, well, wait a minute, you know, let's not just go off uh and work that item. Um, past a certain point, which I guess is defined as two hours. Um, we actually want a majority of council members to debate, deliberate in public about that. And of, of course, if it's appropriate for a closed session, then um, you know, we, we bring that to closed session and, and and staff gets a, a majority opinion about how that new thing weighs against everything else. So I don't see this as anything very complicated. When we had, as was pointed out, when we had a staff city attorney, we still, that, that, that uh city attorney is a member of uh our employees, right, was also subject to this two-hour provision. Is that correct? Deborah, Heather?
I think the chapter on two dot eighteen was written under a time when we had a city staff, city attorney. And so the language in there is different than the one governing the city manager and the sta- regular staff. And it doesn't put a limit as there's response required. And it doesn't, if I recall the language correctly, it doesn't s- talk about any limitation. Uh, Diane, if you have the section in front of you, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, or, or Heather, it just doesn't say anything about that.
I think you're correct, Deb.
Yeah, there's a separate provisions addressing city attorney and staff. And so I, I would argue the city attorney provision controls the city attorney.
So, so I, I don't see this as uh, I, 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 I see this as a, a fair way to ensure that um you know, we can come up with a different number if you like, or we can come up with bankability or something. But it seems to me that things that take enough time and resource. You know, in this case, if we consider, well, we can always hire another attorney from Shoot Mahali or some expert firm. And frankly, right, with Westport, we did. We went through a whole chain of attorneys trying to figure out um what our options were as a city council before we, before we entitled that project. And I know some of you, right, we, we weren't all happy about um what we got and, but we understood because we we had invested a lot in uh, in uh, a number of lawyers that understood uh the law in this area and we were looking for different opinions. So it's not about constraining that. It's about the, the will of the majority of council and making sure that when we go above a certain point that um, you know, we are, we are deba- having as, as possible, right, debates about priorities of things and, and how we spend substantial resources in the public eye, transparently, and ensuring that we don't displace things we've prioritized through our regular annual process for things that one council member is eager to do because in the end it comes out of the same pot. So I, I'd be in favor of doing something here. Thanks.
Okay. John, did you have anything?
Yes. So. Um, yeah, mhm. So to start, you know, um, you read this and it sounds troubling. And I think that's why the residents are speaking about it. It sounds troubling. They've elected us to represent them, to make the right decisions that are going to affect them and this community and to try so hard not to make a mistake. We're all highly educated, but we're not attorneys. And we're not here to, to do the interpretation of the state density bonus law at ten o'clock at night, reading before we go to sleep. The, the possible implications of making bad decisions because we didn't have the guidance that we needed is unacceptable. I believe there is a lot of room for improvement with how we get our guidance from the city attorney. We're all dancing together for the first time. We're, we're new on the city council. Like I said, we're not attorneys. We hired a new attorney to the city. So she has not been functioning in that capacity for this city such that you already have a partner that knows how to dance. So where do I think we can improve the, the amount of cost, the amount of time that's needed? For something like the state density bonus law, when we ask questions of the city attorney, give us guidance, what does that law to truly entitle the developer to? We don't want to do anything illegal and shortchange him, but we also do not want to do anything that is going to short change the residents of the community. And so when we ask questions on interpreting a law, it could be that one or it could be another one, give us the, the, the direction, the guidance as best you can, just like you're the coach of a basketball team. Some of the, some of the guidance that we get upon a first question asked looks like a legal contract with multiple pages that took time to prepare. Tell us that you're asking about what does this state law entitle the developer to? Okay, some of it has not been defined in a court case yet, so these are the possibilities. Then from there, if we need more guidance, we can ask it, but we didn't need a seventeen-page contractual-looking document to tell us that. Because then we go on to the next question. Since there's a vague, vague uh definition in this law and we look to San Francisco who has created a interpretation of the state density bonus law, does that apply to Cupertino or is there something unique about San Francisco that if we were to use the same argument that they used, we would be wrong? Or is it correct regardless of which piece of land it was written for? So give us that guidance and when there is confusion, call the council together and say, you know, this is a tough question that I can't give you good direct answer to. The, the, the developers are going to sue you if you don't give them what they want. That's not the question. The question, we have to stand up for the residents of this community. And if, if we have valid legal arguments that the law indicates this but does not indicate that, and there's the risk of a lawsuit, so be it. We, the council will have
And council member Willie, I just, I appreciate you keeping this vague, but just reminding that, you know, the details of what we're in confidential memories should remain confidential and not be disclosed in, in a public meeting.
Giving any detail.
Thank you.
This is about improving the process like I, I try to use analogies that make things simple. A coach would not write a document and give it to his team. We are a team. We are a team. There is room for improvement. I'll leave it at that. And say that in order to do my job on this council and represent the residents of Cupertino and know that when I render a decision that could be challenged by the developer and take the city to court or it could lose rights for the community, I want to be sure I've got the best guidance that I can possibly get and I'm going to ask for it. And I don't need it to be more complex. Keep it simple. And when in doubt, we can get together as a council. The Brown Act says, I can't be going and calling other councilmen and saying, does this sound good to you? No, I can't do that. And so, yes.
All right. Thank you.
I, I didn't finish my comment. So I, so I asked yesterday because I, I'd like to have data to see what problem we are trying to solve here. So I asked for a list of questions because I have no idea what other questions other council member asked. So Heather kindly prepared a list. I guess this comes, I don't know how many minutes she took. So there were questions. So what we are seeing here really is not an overuse of attorney time. I have a list of questions in the past six months asked by everyone. And what we have seen potential overuse were mostly due to Westport project. That was before um, before April. So I have a list from April to September. I'm not even in there. So I'm so sorry. I was busy. We have questions as, as about residents complained about code enforcement issue, closed session minutes and um Los Altos has been thirty-five lawsuits with like the summary, Lehigh cement issue, reach code and um various issues and vocal loop road of question from residents. So, but total, um, it seems like most council members didn't use um seven or eight hours in a six-month period. So so what we are seeing here is not really a problem. What we had had earlier abnormally with Westport was because there were issues with the project that it created five extra units, but asked for double the heights. So we had a question, we had confusion on how to interpret the law. And this, I think the staff did not make it clear. They pushed back. They did tell them this is not right. And so all of these were due to um things that's beyond any council member's control, but we need to understand. And this is related to a specific project. This is not a pattern. And this is a one-time thing. So this kind of thing I hope do not happen if we fix the process to be more clear on what the city expects of a project and applicants. So I think, and when we don't see a real problem supported by data and then we are saying we want to set the limit, this shows we are distrusting each other to make the judgment on what kind of questions we want on, on asking um questions from our city attorney. So are we not trusting each other? That's a big question for all of you. And then I think also we need to consider are our questions related to an up, upcoming agenda item? Do we want to set the limit to a question that's related to an upcoming project? Or like reach code or an ordinance or some issue that's in the work program? Do we want to set the limit on that, too? And then also I think what happened in the past is there were some questions that could have, should have been answered by staff, but it was not. And so we had to ask attorney. And then that's something that could be fixed if this planning staff were more proactive in answering questions and be responsible for answering them. And then also there are a lot of, I see that is issues raised by the community members and the council members follow up to like code enforcement, like questions about easement. So maybe we can, are we then not responding to que- com- community member questions or do we want to put all of this on the agenda for us to approve? That's a process issue. And but a lot of those are probably not a lot of time. Then the last one is a new issue that any council member is investigating for future agenda item. That one may be in case anyone is, has um something that they think is important for Cupertino. Do we want to limit their time? So, but first of all, let's see if there is data to support. We do need to limit because there is um a pattern of overuse of attorney time. If so, then let's find out whether we have can better collaborate and.
Hey, can you finish up?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right. So it doesn't seem like there's any um.
Completely agree with the, the sentiment.
Yeah.
Thought that Leon long said, look, we got no data. There's no data at all on, on this. There's one-page staff report. How much time is being used? You know, how, how much is being billed? How are we looking year over year? There's just no, no data whatsoever. I, I think the first step is to look at that set of numbers, you know, how are we, how are we spending? Is this a problem? You, you know, I, it's a really good point. I'm because, you know, again, I know I use almost no attorney time.
Right, yeah, we.
So, and I'm not, I'm not bragging about it. I'm just saying that, look, I, I, I mean, I, I think that there are a lot of other things that our council members are doing other than bothering our city attorney's office. And by basically saying, when we say, can you rein in the costs um to come at us with a statute that basically says, limit your council member time in two hours a week? I mean, that's an incitiation of some sort.
And I.
And if you're gonna do that, give us some data, all right? And so I, I, I say, let, let us.
Okay. Yeah, let's finish up here.
If we need to examine legal spending on a monthly or even bimonthly or quarterly basis, let's do that. Make it a subcommittee. Make it a subcommittee. Make it, you know, you make it vague. Make it legally permissible with regard to how you describe closed sessions and agendas. And break it down in accordance to what the spending is. Include as part of that category, amount of time spent on councilmember requests. I mean, define your problem first, and then maybe we can talk about passing a law with regard to this. But if you, if you start with this and say, look, we need to pass a law, you know, two hours per councilmember per week. I mean, you know, that's, there's, there's an implication being made there. But just, you know, the more I think about it, the less it sits well. So let's look at some numbers.
Okay.
Can I, can I also diffuse that a little bit? In that we were asked to find a way to limit this a little bit?
No, no one asked you to
I threw it out there, and if you don't like it, then that's fine. I mean, but let's, let's figure out why it was put on there in the first place. We didn't just conjure it up. So we took a stab at it, and we didn't get any, you know.
Yeah.
There are many laws that we don't conjure up. Like, we're allowed to talk to staff, you know? Or, or let's take minutes of our closed session items, you know? And, and that, that just aren't really understood or identified by the people.
Yeah, so, Darcy, I'm not sure.
Let's not put laws on the books for things that we don't really need to correct from, from a statutory perspective, you know, to speak nothing of even a financial perspective. You know, show us that this is a problem. You know, the, the, there's, there's, there's an implication being made here, and, and neither one of us was consulted about whether we want to pass a law regarding this. Are there any jurisdictions out there that have a law like this in all of Santa Clara County? That's, that's one of the questions I would like to ask. Um, you know, if, if, before we entertain something like this. So, so let's, let's go back. Let's table this. Let's keep an eye on the spending. Let's find a way to make it known to council and the public how the spending is going. And then let's take it from there. But let's figure out what makes sense as a remedy.
Are you done? So
Mayor Sharp, could I just make a comment on the staff report? First of all, this item was requested of staff. We were directed to bring forward a change to, a suggested change to the municipal code that would allow, um, the council to limit individual use of city attorney time by councilmembers. So we were specifically asked to do that.
Okay, I don't recall it being a moon, uh, I mean, I recall asking for some kind of policy regarding excessive use. I never, but I don't recall it being a municipal code.
Passive there. We were asked, you were asked by whom? You were not asked by the mayor. You were not asked by the vice mayor. I mean, you, you know, this is one of those
No, 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 we, we were
We were certainly
We did ask.
I remember, I remember talking about the bills and going, this is getting excessive. Can we look at what we can be doing? And this is the next, that I recall of this issue that we have a statute, a proposed statute in front of us limiting to a very specific amount of hours, um, you know, on a, on a weekly basis, without numbers in front of us with regard to whether this is part of the billing issue. Oh, you know, i- if there was a particular request, then maybe that's part of our process as well. Maybe this should be written. Uh, but I have no recollection whatsoever of saying, let's go change the municipal code. Oh, and, and let's make it a couple hours per councilmember. I, I have no recollection of
You were, you were not that direct of what you said. What was said to us upon the closing of one of the closed sessions, I forget the day, was, let's find a way to limit the city attorney time. That's, that's what was said. So I made a suggestion. We all didn't like it. All good, so.
All right, yeah.
I just wanted to mention, Mr. Mayor, that the reason the staff report is very lean is because the staff, we have no position on this. It's really up to council how you want to handle it. And we, and there was no reason for us to put a lot of data into a staff report to prove that it was necessary because it's really a matter of council policy. If you want data, we'll provide data. But because this idea didn't generate with staff, we don't have the, and we don't have a position on it. We really don't have
Right, but the idea to solve, the idea to address it with a change to the law came from staff. I kind of agree with Darcy. We did, you know, this is a long time ago. We did try to find a way to rein in the legal expenses. Uh, but I don't ever recall requesting that we pass a law like this to do it.
That's, that's okay. I mean, that's fine that council can dislike it.
I also want to say one other thing, and it really was upsetting at the time. And I, and when a previous resident spoke, and then I said, forget it, I won't say anything. But it is important to say it. Um, because the resident said, there's no benefit to residents of, um, city councilmembers using city attorney time. And that is just so one hundred percent untrue. Um, I mean, we're almost compelled to ask the city attorney's opinions on various things, and it does benefit residents. Um, so I just wanted to get that out because when I heard that, I was like, you know, no, no one really said that. But, I mean, it was just so out of line and, and so uncalled for. I wanted to say something about that.
And, and look, you can look on the record on this. When we wanted to pass emergency rental protections uh, at the end of, I think it was last year, we're talking about urgency ordinance. And I stated that, no, you don't need all these, you know, extra notice periods. That was, that was actually a matter of looking at the law, okay? And let us understand what our laws say right now before we go and start making new laws, making particular implications about problems that might not even be part of the problem that we're trying to, trying to address here. Okay, so, so I say, let's go back. Let's examine this. Let's look at the, let's look at the billing. Let's look how it's breaking down. Um, and then make a determination as to what makes sense. Is it a policy? Is it something like a committee looking regularly and inviting the public for transparency purposes? You know, th- this is not one of those things where you immediately ramp up to, let's change the municipal code, because
Okay, make a motion then.
Make a motion.
Then we table this. Let's table this.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion to table it. Let's vote.
Well, in addition, I'm sorry, in addition to that, uh, if we could form a subcommittee here, um, that would meet sometime next month to give, uh, some recommendations as to how we would go forward, either on a bimonthly or a quarterly basis with regard to the evaluations of the bills uh, and, and some openness and transparency with regard to how our legal spending is done, uh, vis a vis the public, then, uh, I would like to make that part of the motion as well. So it's September
Okay, do you have people you want on the subcommittee?
Uh, I, I, I think naturally it makes sense to put myself on it. Um, I am, um, open to any, any volunteers. Does anyone else
I'd be, I'd be willing to volunteer, but if there's somebody who has
No, go ahead. I think, I think it's better to have you, um, people that, um, we know will be here and, you know, you know, going forward after the election. So we, we don't know what's going to happen yet. So I would volunteer, but who, who knows? And, you know, Rod has termed out, so I think it should be, uh, Darcy and either you or Liang.
Okay, and, and then we'll just, you know, schedule a time, uh, sometime, some actually, sometime in, in early, uh, late October, early November, uh, to have the first subcommittee meeting. Um, I, I'd like to request that the city manager and the city attorney be there as well. Um, so, um, that would be my motion to form the subcommittee and to table this particular item until it's determined.
Great, fair enough. I'll second the motion. Can we have
Who was the subcommittee with, Willie and Paul?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, Councilmember Chow?
Hi.
Councilmember Sinks?
No.
Uh, Councilmember Willie?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Hi.
Mayor Sharp?
Hi.
Motion carries with Sinks voting now.
Of course it does. Um, all right, item eleven, COVID nineteen response, Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security CARES Act Framework and Funding Priorities. Okay, let's have the staff report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, city councilmembers. Christina Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. And with me tonight also Zach Korach, Finance Manager. Uh, we'll be, uh, doing something a little different this evening. We're going to be showing you a short informational infographic video that will summarize the CARES Act funding and recommendations before you this evening. And then staff is available should you have any questions after the video. Um, Zach, can you go ahead and play the video, please?
Before I start the video, can I confirm that everybody sees the presentation screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
All right, here we go.
Okay, um, what was the, did it say seven hundred and thirty-five thousand for law enforcement? At the beginning?
It did. Um, so to give a little, uh, additional background, so the city, um, is receiving seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars um, in federal funds passed through the state of California for coronavirus relief. Um, the, the treasury, the Office of Inspector General is taking a position, um, for administrative convenience that all public safety and public health workers, the staff time, um, that corresponds to those, um, to public safety and public health would be, um, presumptively, uh, or substantially dedicated to COVID nineteen response. Uh, what that means for local municipalities, specifically in California, is that the CARES Act allocations may be used uh, for, for public safety and public health costs. Um, and as such, the city is recommending that the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars be allocated for law enforcement for a number of reasons. Um, number one, there is an administrative convenience, um, on behalf of city staff, um, from a reporting standpoint. But more importantly, allocating the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to law enforcement provides general fund relief. This would free up additional dollars, um, that can be used for additional eligible expenses that may be reimbursable from additional, um, grant funding on the back end. Once the emergency period is declared over, um, then the, the period will be triggered for FEMA reimbursement. And so a number of the purchases, um, or recommended purchases that were included in the presentation may be eligible for FEMA reimbursement on the back end.
Okay, so this is, when I first saw that, I thought, oh, you're giving another seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, um, to the sheriff's budget. But that's not what you're doing here.
Correct, yeah. The city has already incurred those, those law enforcement costs as part of the, the contract service. Um, but rather, the city is just allocating use of the CARES Act funds that it's receiving towards law enforcement so that, again, administrative convenience and then also additional grant opportunities on the back end.
Okay, so it's freeing up their money?
Right.
Okay, all right.
It provides the city with more flexibility.
Okay. Um, all right, yeah, that's the question I had. Um, let's see. Um, anybody else? I don't see any hands raised yet.
Can I, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Might be that I might be truncating the process too much for folks. But, um, you know, we, we have CARES Act dollars that come in a couple of different form, forms that are outlined in the staff report. Um, so receiving money to kind of offset some of our COVID-related expenses, I don't think is a big controversy. I think it's a good thing. And so I might suggest that you just, you know, talk to, if there's any public comment, for sure, take it, but, um, see if you can just
Right, there's no public comment. I see one councilmember with their hand raised. Go ahead, John.
Okay, so, nice video. I mean, it helps to get us in the, uh, the mood for, for talking about, you know, how we need help. The, the questions that I would have is trying to understand the numbers. They flash by on the screen so quick. So the, the CARES Act money that you're referring to, is it seven hundred and thirty-five thousand? Or do those different buckets that you were showing add up to more than seven hundred and thirty-five thousand? Um, that would be my first question. You know, what is, what is the total of the CARES, uh, bucket that's coming to Cupertino?
Sure, so there, there is seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We're halfway towards receiving the full allotment. Um, and that would be the primary CARES Act, um, grant funding. And the numbers that were flashing on the screen or during the presentation, um, they, I would have to go back to them. There we go. Um, so we have the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's the allocation that the city is receiving. There is a second tranche of grant funding that's going to be administered through Community Development Block Grant. That's going to be used predominantly for small business assistance. That's five hundred and fifty-four thousand. And then a portion of, a portion of fifty percent of the unemployment insurance assistance, um, expenses that the city has incurred, um, is going to be reimbursable. So approximately fifty-three, fifty-four thousand dollars there. Um, and if we go to, I believe there was some subsequent slide that showed, um, the various
While, while you're on that slide, so we're going to, we're slated then for seven thirty-five plus five fifty-four, plus half of the one oh seven.
That's correct.
Okay, great. So, and you're, you're saying of that, we've already gotten about half of that? So about half of that is already, um, been received in the form of a check or a deposit into the city account so that the city is able to use that money, distribute that money?
That's correct. And so to date, um, the city has spent approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars um, on COVID nineteen response. And the majority of that would be, um, related to PPNE, uh, work from home, um, teleworking capabilities, um, contributions to West Valley Community Services um, for, um, tenants that are at risk of eviction. Um, a number of, a number of events. It, it, it's not that we were, the city was waiting for the CARES funding allocation. The city, uh, was moving forward and addressing the COVID nineteen response. Um, and so a portion of the seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, specifically one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, has already been spent. And the information that was included in the presentation would be additional, um, recommendations for council to approve. Um, I know for category two, and I believe that was predominantly the additional, um, personal protective equipment, um, of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Um, there's various, uh, facility improvements and upgrades to comply with, um, with current health measures. Um, uh, there was two hundred and eleven thousand dollars for category four. Didn't Christina pull into it? Yes. Here we go.
So did you have to come up with these categories for, uh, the federal government to then say, okay, Cupertino?
that $735,000 to address um, in, in many senses, additional COVID-19 related items um, that would be necessary for the community.
So my last question then is, so uh, Congress, you know, put this money, you know, what was the first one, $2.5 trillion? And now they've got another one that's, I want to say was 1.5, but maybe it's $2 trillion. Is there more, I mean, is there more money in the next bill or is CARES totally out of those? And those are used in different ways? Uh, you know, I'm, I'm not gathering that from the news, so to speak, so I'm kind of asking for guidance on, you know, if they did the first uh, COVID uh, relief, and then now they're doing another one, and whether, whether or not there's additional COVID funds, depending on how long COVID goes. What if Congress does a third one? And it goes into, it goes to the middle of next year? What's the landscape look like? And then I'll leave it at that for tonight. You've done a good job of explaining this. So thank you.
No problem. And, and that very well could be the case. Um, one of the objectives that um, we've worked very closely with, uh, with the state of California um, throughout this process, and one of the goals, particularly through the reporting process, um, is to try to determine um, or quantify the extent of the financial impacts um, in terms of, of expenditures that have not been incurred yet, but municipalities believe that they, they will need to incur um, over the next six months. Um, and the reason why they are making, putting such, putting forth such an effort to obtain all that data is to further advocate um, at the federal level for additional funds. It's very clear, based on the preliminary data that the state has received from the, the approximately, I believe, 277 jurisdictions that it submitted, um, that the funding amount, the funding levels that municipalities have received is insufficient to meet their needs.
Great, thank you. I, I do see I have one, um, one member of the public that wishes to speak. Um, uh, so welcome, Kitty Moore.
Hi, uh, good evening, Mayor Sharp. I just wanted to clarify, or see if someone could clarify, what out of, out of this uh, funding will be done um, for the small businesses in Cupertino? I know I'd heard a while ago that we had the $5,000 grants to small businesses, and I'm wondering if there, if this is, if there's something more than that which is going to be offered, or if, if that's it? And with regards to the homeless uh, encampment, there was some money that was shown being allocated there, and I'm wondering what that would entail and for how long? All right, thank you.
Okay, can the staff member answer that?
So I know, um, as for the, the small business assistance, I know we have Angela Sway um, on the call. If I could-
Great, oh, welcome Angela.
Thank you.
Let me uh, see if I need to unmute her. Uh, she's not muted. Welcome, yeah.
Good, uh, good evening, Admiral Mayor and council members. Uh, yes, for the, with the first tranche of funding that we had received, uh, that original amount was $229,017. That did go towards uh, the Small Business Emergency Relief Grant Program. Uh, 37 businesses uh, received $5,000 grants. Uh, and so I believe then this additional funding in the amount of $324,922 uh, dollars would be available to be used towards um, a second round of um, small business grants if council and um, city manager decided to, to uh, focus the funds towards that.
And then to answer the second half of um, Ms. Moore's question regarding dollars for the homeless encampment support, um, as you know, we have, this is just an example, we have provided handwashing facilities, uh, debris pickup twice a week, and um, porta potties at, at the sites. And so that cost is being accommodated uh, with, part of that costs is, all of that cost is being accommodated by part of the funding as designated.
Okay, sounds good. So, um, I'm ready, oh, Darcy, you're muted.
Yeah, uh, can I, I'm gonna bring a motion.
Oh, great. I was gonna do it, but go ahead.
Uh, I move that we adopt resolution number 20-116, amending the budget and authorizing the city manager to accept $735,259 of coronavirus relief fund, or CRF, from the US Treasury, which is uh, passed through via the state of California, and $553,939 in CARES CB from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. That's my motion.
Sure, I'll second that.
Councilmember Dow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Um, we are on to council and staff comments and future agenda items. Do we have any staff comments?
None for me at this time.
Okay, any, any council members have any comments or requests for agenda items?
Hand is raised.
Okay, I see it. Go ahead.
So the first one, I would hope that this agenda item would be really quick. Um, I want to request that the fencing budget, the $765,000 that is specifically for fencing, and specifically, specifically, the privacy of the houses that have the uh, trail right on their fence. You know, my memory is that the city staff had said uh, uh, $170 per linear foot, and that Councilman Paul had then, at the end of the evening, moved $200,000 more for the uh, privacy fencing. And so I would like it to come back to us so that we can truly see, was that in fact spent the way we intended? I don't want to micromanage. I want to be sure that the residents are in fact um, uh, hearing that we are providing for them the best we can. Hopefully I get a second.
Uh, I'm not sure what you're, what you're asking for in the agenda item. You're not asking for more money, right?
Nope, nope, not asking. I would like to see the breakdown of the 765,000, and specifically how the 200,000 got put. Because what we're, what I think I'm seeing is that it's not reducing that $170 square, a linear foot for the privacy of those residents.
Well, um, as long as, as long as you're bringing it up, my, my question is, I thought we'd already had a deadline and sometime in August about letting residents choose. Is that true, staff?
Right.
And then this fall, we're gonna queue up a final decision on all this? Where, where does that stand?
Is Roger here still?
Yeah, he's getting on-
Yeah, no, no. Good evening again. Um, yes, we, we did have a, um, I guess you'd call it a workshop with residents who live along the creek trail. And we did set the end of August as the timeline to, to receive their fence choices.
Okay, so did we receive, I mean, we received choices from as many people, I guess, as elected to give us choices? So are we queuing this up for a decision this fall, or what's the deal?
Uh, yes, I think, I think maybe absent 10 of the 80, roughly 80 residents uh, ha- have made choices, and it is our schedule to have, uh, we are at 95% on the plans, and it is our schedule to have this out to bid uh, within, within the next month and to council in early spring for a recommendation to award.
In the spring? I thought we were voting on it this fall, no?
Well, the, the advertisement will occur, um, let's say in November. Um, it'll be out to bid for a month and a half or so, then um, take the bid award to council. It could be to councils earliest January, February.
So what is Councilmember Willie asking for, just to report on, on how many people took advantage of it, or what?
No, no.
So, there is a-
Let John answer.
Okay. Why don't you-
So, the residents that I've seen emails from have said that it was not fair for them to have to give fencing choices without knowing what the cost to them was gonna be. Councilman Paul uh, put another $200,000 for privacy fencing along that creek trail for the, the houses that are the uh, most impacted there. And yet, when I asked the city manager, what is the cost to the residents, because the residents are, are unhappy that they had to make choices without knowing what the true cost was, and it sounds like the cost never got reduced by the additional 200,000. It was $170 a linear foot. Uh, for residents, that was too much. We put $200,000 in. It should have been brought down accordingly. And then they would, you know, make their choice, or correct their choice based on that situation. It's not fair that later on they find out, "Oh, you guys have left, leftover funds at the city," or whatever the case may be, when it would have changed what they picked for their fencing option. So I would just, I have 15 minutes. Show us precisely how the $200,000 extra was allotted, and then the residents were then allowed to make the choice for their fences based on the, the new maximum out-of-pocket amount.
Well, and, and I can provide you the, the fence choices made to date and how that compares up to the dollars that have been allocated. Um, I don't, I don't see how, I don't see why that would re, would need, um, you know, feature council consideration. I can provide that information.
Well, I, I, I'll suggest that we actually queue this up for a vote this year. We allocate the money, we, we approve, right? Subject, yes, to uh, contract review. We, we approve the project to move forward. And then if it takes more time to get the contracts, that we basically authorize staff to go ahead and, and, and do the work to, to consider alternative bids and um, proceed with this thing. I, I don't, I, I thought we were, we were clear about the timeline for this project, so I-
Right now-
I pointed that we're stalling on it.
I mean, this is not an agendized item now. I don't think we can discuss it anymore. I'm just not understanding um, why it needs to be on the agenda at all, if the, you know-
We, we put more money to the, to lower the cost to the residents of the fence, and it, Councilman Paul is the one who put the additional-
Right, right, I recall that.
Yes. And I want to just make sure that the residents did in fact get the benefit of that additional money.
So I second that, because I think last time also there was some confusion on what the extra allocation covers or not covers. And there were people asking me after the meeting last time too. And maybe that's just schedule update and get all the questions answered.
So you're seconding it?
Yeah.
All right, well, that's two people, so that's an agenda item then.
And I'll try and keep it to 15-
If any residents have questions, they can ask at that time.
Right, as long as this is, right, it's just a report on, um, you know, how many people chose each thing. We're not, right, we're not redistributing any money.
Can't we handle that in council reports? If, if all you do is want to report, then let's just get a, get a report written. We don't need to agendize it, do we?
Well, I agree, but two people want to do agendaize it, so that's-
To do what, to do what exactly?
The, the residents need to know that we have put at least what we can toward their fencing choices for their out-of-pocket expense, so they can make the right choice for themselves. They're gonna live with that for, for eternity, and they want to make the right decision.
But I thought we already told them how much they're getting per linear foot.
And, and, and we had a deadline, and the deadlines come and go. We're a month past the deadline. I don't understand this.
Well, you know, if, if they, you know what, two people voted to put on the agenda, so there'll be a report on it, as long as it's clear we're not reallocating any money at this point.
We sure know how to rehash things over and over and over again and not get forward progress.
I don't disagree with you, but-
I mean, my God.
And I think this is because John has asked many times. He didn't get a satisfactory, satisfactory answer yet. Otherwise he wouldn't-
I realize there are people that want to do this, and I've realized there are people that don't, but honestly, you know, we had a majority vote on this, and we've done it several times. So I just don't know why staff is dragging their feet. We, we never keep our deadlines. We said we were gonna queue this up for a final decision this fall, and now we want to have another discussion. To what end?
Well, I don't think it's, it'll be a presentation, not a discussion, because-
Oh, it'll be a discussion, I guarantee it.
Okay, 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 fair enough.
You're gonna have, if you want to report, then ask staff for a report. If you want to have a discussion, queue it up for a councilman.
I did not put this on the agenda, but, you know, as you know, if two council people want to put it on the agenda, there's no choice.
I, I, I heard a report being requested. It was, you know, John said 15 minutes, so let's, let's get the update.
Right, so the agenda item is to have a report on, you know, how people, you know, what choices they made for fencing. It's not, it's not a thing to allocate or reallocate any money.
It's up to you and the city manager to determine where these items go on the agenda. I mean, I think it would naturally fall under city manager's report. This is just me personally, but can we move on since this has already been, you know-
Yeah, that's fine. It's on the agenda uh, for a future meeting, okay. Anybody else have another?
I have nothing. I don't know. Does anyone else have other items?
So I, I would also like a study session on the homeless situation in Cupertino. I mean, we get a lot of emails from the residents, and I don't feel that we really have our arms around what we in Cupertino can do.
progress.
I don't disagree with you, but.
I mean, my God.
I think this is because John has asked many times. He didn't get a satisfactory answer yet. Otherwise, he wouldn't.
I realize there are people that want to do this, and I've realized there are people that don't. But honestly, you know, we had a majority vote on this, and we've done it several times. So, I just don't know why staff is dragging their feet. We never keep our deadlines. We said we were going to queue this up for a final decision this fall, and now we want to have another discussion. To what end?
Well, I don't think it's, it'll be a presentation, not a discussion, because.
Oh, it'll be a discussion, I guarantee you.
Okay, okay, okay. Fair enough.
You're going to have, if you want to report, then ask staff for a report. If you want to have a discussion, queue it up for council.
I did not put this on the agenda, but, you know, as you know, if two council people want to put it on the agenda, there's no choice.
I heard a report being requested. It was, you know, John said 15 minutes, so let's get the update.
Right. So, the agenda item is to have a report on, you know, how people, you know, what choices they made for fencing. It's not, it's not a thing to allocate or reallocate any money.
It's up to you and the city manager to determine where these items go on the agenda. I mean, I think it would naturally fall under city manager's report. This is just me personally. But can we move on since this has already been, you know?
Yeah, that's fine. It's on the agenda for a future meeting. Okay. Anybody else have another?
I have nothing. I don't know. Does anyone else have other items?
So, I would also like a study session on the homeless situation in Cupertino. I mean, we get a lot of emails from the residents, and I don't feel that we really have our arms around what we in Cupertino can do. And so, I would like that to, I think it's appropriate for a study session with staff telling us, you know, how we can move forward. We do have the one potential city work plan to get some, hopefully, into a work-type situation. But this is more about the homeless housing, and what can we do in that regard?
You know, John, I actually think that's a good idea. You know, our mayor sits on the county-wide homeless task force, and it is, it is a topic of impending and serious interest and relevance in our city. So, I'd be happy to.
That's fine. And we, you know, I will point out, we already had the county come and give us a presentation on this, but, yeah, we can do it again. Maybe that's the second.
Maybe, maybe in the November, just, I don't know. But I mean, I know we have a lot teed up, too. But, you know, it is, it's a consistently pressing issue.
Yeah. I mean, we had a prior session, but I think maybe it's more concrete for people, given the homeless encampment, right? So, I'm supportive, too, and maybe we can get beyond what the general facts of the last meeting and talk about, well, you know, express ourselves on what we think Cupertino's response should be, with regard to permanent supportive housing or something.
Well said. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything before we adjourn and move to the next meeting?
I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Oh, second, adjourned. Okay. Now, we are on to our next meeting.
Oh, yeah. That's right.
This is the special meeting of the Cupertino Pub Facilities Corporation. Can we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Chow?
Aye.
Board Member Sinks?
Yes.
Board Member Willie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Uh, yes, here.
Chair Sharp.
Here. Boy, I'd never even realized I was going to be a director when I got elected to this job. Okay, so there's only one item. It's the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar unless there's public input.
I'll, let me check for public input. No, there is none. All right. I'll second. Can we have a roll call?
Board Member Chow?
Aye.
Board Member Sinks?
Yes.
Board Member Willie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul?
Aye.
Chair Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. We are adjourned at 10 o'clock. Oh, only one hour late. It's pretty good. Okay. Good night, everybody.
Thanks.